Good evening. This is a special meeting of the Board of Appeals. All tonight, members tonight present Brian Aglausten, Greta Haney, Robin Kramer, myself, we have four members on, although it's a five member board, that's what we have. We have four members that are on. We also have our counsel Charlie Gottlieb, Ashley Lay, planning office of AKRF, and John Keller from the engineering firm. The purpose of tonight's meeting is really with regard to one matter only. We're going to also do some other things, but I gather we're not now because of the change in the agenda. So it's going to go 416 Waverly Avenue. The real purpose of this was just to allow the applicant on 416 Waverly to provide they wanted an opportunity to comment, provide any other information, respond to any inquiries. So we could then address the matter because it's a, and we will do so after the meeting, I guess between now and the next meeting or two. It'll have to be addressed and we will take that up with counsel as well. But the real purpose here is that in order to finalize the FEIS and to allow the applicant to address the board over the present status. And after that, we will deliberate with regard to the completion of the FEIS and the finding statements as may be appropriate. Charlie, are you here? Can't see you there. Yeah?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay. Is that, you're under, is that correct Charlie, from your standpoint, from the legal standpoint?
Yes, that sounds great.
Okay, great. Thank you. Is the applicant here?
They are. So let me, um.
Yeah. One thing on our board feels we can. My inclination is to let them make a presentation for half an hour and then we have questions, we can deal with those inadequate responses to prior things. This is really not argumentative, but just trying to get everything on the table here. Hi, Robin, how are you? See you then.
I'm not, there's quite a few from the applicant team here. Do you want them all promoted to panelists?
Um, well, let's see. I gather the just trying to take a quick look here. I guess Mr. Jeffrey is the, is he, is he here?
Yes.
I guess promote him and he wants to promote everybody else, whoever he wants to promote. Sure. How many people do they have?
So I brought up their attorney, planner, engineer, and traffic engineer.
And then Ashley, you'll also have some opportunities to, you can address this as well in terms of this is appropriate.
Okay, I think their team is promoted and ready to speak whenever.
Okay.
We'd like to invite them to do so.
Sure. All right. Mr. Jeffrey, I hear.
Good evening Chairman Neufeld, members of the board. I'm here on behalf of the applicant East Coast North Properties. I'll see. Actually, I don't know if you can see if Sean or Chris Murphy are also attending. They would also like to make a brief comment at the beginning.
Okay, let me just address something with you first. I don't know if you followed me or if you were listening or not, I'm not sure. But basically, uh, the point here is just that you had wanted an opportunity to address the board on this and we've been through a lot and heard a lot on this. So if you want to do so, obviously you can do so briefly. And then I think it's, uh, board or consultants may have some questions about inquiries that we've made. So we can get to that. So we can at least wrap up this part of it today. So then like we board can then make its determinations regarding finalization of the FEIS and the finding statement. But, um, if you'd like to begin that way, fine. If not, we have some questions that different members have and that exist out there. Open questions, but if you want to go first that way, why don't you just do that?
And we would appreciate that. And Mr. Chairman, we'd like to thank you and the board for the opportunity to be able to present to you and be elevated as panelists this evening. We had the opportunity to watch your April meeting from last month. And we thought it was a very productive discussion and having, you know, the opportunity, although we were panelists at that meeting, the board having the opportunity to delve deep on one of the issues. I think was very, very helpful in addressing one of the issues. And I think the issue as it relates to the contamination got its due course in that meeting. Some of the questions that the board had seemed to be resolved. So we'd like to take the opportunity this evening just to go through a couple of brief opening statements. We have our professionals on the Zoom this evening. So, and we know that the board has in particular, two questions in particular as it relates to flooding and stormwater impacts as well as visuals. So we'd like to devote some time and attention to that. But to begin with, I'd like to, I think Chris Murphy, one of the principals for the project I see is have been promoted to panelists and would like to make a statement. And then I'll orient the board to the order of the presentation that we'd like to go to. Our intent this evening is to address your comments and concerns and questions. I do recall at the end of your April meeting that the board asked Ms. Lai to go back and review the November meeting. We took a great care to watch that meeting, take notes to try to respond in the FEIS to the open comments and questions. We didn't see any memoranda, so I don't know if Ms. Lai had the opportunity to finish that, if we did respond to all those comments. But our goal here is to present an FEIS to you that addresses all of your comments and questions. So whether we need to respond further in writing, whether you have open comments and questions as of this evening, we'd like to try to endeavor to answer them tonight. But if we can't, we certainly like the opportunity to present to you a full and complete document for your review.
Let me ask you this. What is, what are you planning on presenting and what's your time period on this? So we get a sense here if we're on the same page, we can do this.
We did not do a dress rehearsal, so I don't know the length of time. But Mr. Murphy would just like to make a couple of brief comments. Mr. Cleary will then speak with respect to where we are in this FEIS DIS process and our attempt to being responsive as we can to the comments and questions that have come up from the board. Next, Michael Stein will then speak.
No fucking.
Mike Murphy, can you please mute yourself? Then Michael Stein will talk about flooding and stormwater. Kim Martelli will walk you through some of the visuals and address the visual comments and questions that you had. We do have Brian Dempsey, our traffic engineer who can very briefly, I don't think that was a significant question or concern that the board had. But Mr. Dempsey's here to address some of the changes because as you're aware, we did take great pains to redesign and re-envision the project from the DIS to where it stands right now. And then tried to address the comments and concerns that we heard from the board. And we're also addressing the maker zone initiative as well as some of the comments that we've heard throughout this entire process in response to the DIS. And then Bill Cannavan is also here this evening. I think again, the contamination questions have been resolved and addressed at the last meeting. But he's here to the extent that you have any open questions for him. So that's the outline of what we'd like to go through, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay with you.
Okay, why don't you go ahead? Just, we have some time constraints, but go ahead.
Okay. So I will turn it over to Chris Murphy, one of the principals for the applicant.
I'm going to let, we prepared a statement. I'm going to let Michael Murphy read it for me. If that's all right, Tony?
Yep.
Sean couldn't make it.
Michael? Okay, seems Mr. Murphy's having some technical difficulty. So if okay with the board.
Hang on, hang on, Mike is coming on now. It's on, it's, you can speak. Say hello. Hi.
Hello. Good evening.
Can you hear me Chairman Neufeld?
Yes, I can.
Great. Sorry.
I can hear you.
No, it is. We love technology, but we don't trust it.
All right.
Anyways, good evening Chairman Neufeld and the Village zoning board members. My name is Michael Murphy and I will be speaking on behalf of Chris and Sean Murphy. Sean and Chris Murphy are the owners of Murph Brothers Contracting and Mamaronek Self-Storage. And are the applicants for the property being referred to as 416 Waverly Avenue, East Coast Properties, East Coast North Properties. For the record, this is the property located at the corner of Waverly Avenue and Fenimore Road that they have jointly owned for 22 years. Just a little background, as you may know, Chris and Sean first came to before the Mamaronek Land Use Boards in 2008 asking to, for approval of a 90,000 square foot self-storage facility. In 2009, the proposed project received a positive declaration from the ZBA. Concurrently, the state of the economy in 2009 severely affected their construction businesses' ability to make money. At this time, they were unfamiliar with the self-storage business and if it would be successful. They were also very concerned about the added cost of going through the secret process. And also so they withdrew the application. The economy improved in 2010 and the construction business picked up. They decided again in 2012 to seek approval to build a self-storage facility on their property. However, only asking for 40,000 square foot building. When they appeared before the ZBA in 2014 for what is now Mamaronek Self-Storage, their attorney indicated to the board that it would be the first self-storage building of its kind in the community. And if this succeeded, the applicant would come back and ask for more. So Mamaronek Self-Storage opened the doors and to the Mamaronek community in two, in October of 2015. And it's been a very successful venture. It certainly has proved to be the community's local self-storage solution. Judging by the fact that over two thirds of our clients come from two zip codes. 10543 and 10538. That's Larchmont and Mamaronek. We're happy to be providing a service to the community at 90 to 100% capacity year round. Currently, Mamaronek Self-Storage is the only building in the industrial area that manages its own stormwater. The building does not add to traffic or parking problems in the industrial area. Nor do we burden the village fire department or the DPW. And we don't add additional kids to the village school systems. As you'll see from the renderings that are of our proposed project, the design reflects the spirit of the Maker Zones intent. We see our building as a gateway to the village welcoming traffic from Larchmont, Mamaronek, and I-95 North exit ramp. We also see it as an anchor, a starting point for an improved development in the industrial area. An area that generates significant tax revenue to the village and an area that desperately needs improvement. It is possible that other industrial area property owners who would like to make improvements or upgrades will be reluctant to come before the village land use boards because they too may have to spend several years and millions of dollars just to improve their properties. Tonight is the 33rd meeting that this application overall has attended. Thirty-three meetings. Since starting at the American Planning Board in May 23rd, 2018, we have been to one planning board meeting, two Harbor Coastal Zoning Commission meetings, and 29 zoning board of appeal meetings. Tonight marks the application's 30th time before the ZBA. That means that in 29 meetings, we have not been allowed to make a full presentation of the proposed project. This process has been time consuming and expensive, upwards to $1 million in expenses and lost revenue. Over the years, we have listened, listened to our, your comments and concerns and we have heard you. We have redesigned the proposed addition with significant changes to square footage and overall design. Members of our team have been, have been cut off and kept from speaking at public meetings. And since the format of these meetings changed to Zoom instead of in person, some representatives for this application have not been promoted. And were kept from speaking or responding at certain meetings. It has been four years and no member of any land use boards has officially visited the site to see what is existing and what we are proposing. I'm going to repeat that statement, Chairman. It has been four years and no member of any of the land use boards has officially visited the site to see what is existing and what we are proposing. We invite any and all for you to do so. What we are requesting tonight is that the members of the board allow all the members of our team to present their portions to this project, of this project. Please, after all these years, Mr. Chairman, give them your attention.
I just have one question. This is the the, the 30th time you've, you've had, you've been on the agenda of the zoning board for this application?
Yes. Yes. I think you should know that. In case you don't.
No, I don't know that. I don't, you've just.
You're on almost all 30 of them.
My, so Mr. Chairman, we certainly appreciate your, your attention to this matter. We thank you again for the opportunity to be heard this evening. I'm now going to ask Mr. Cleary just to summarize where we are in the FEIS DIS process for you. And indicate again how we've been trying to be responsive to your comments and questions on this very important project for the village.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Appreciate the opportunity. I'll be brief. We are in the process of trying to move the FEI, the environmental impact statement along. Subject to your positive declaration and what was.
Excuse me, I'm not showing you on here. That's why I'm interrupting you. Oh, there we go. Okay.
Can you hear me? Can you see?
Oh, I can. Yeah.
Okay, good. Your positive declaration that was adopted back in 2019 resulted in the preparation of this team's draft environmental impact statement. You had a public hearing on that in April of 21. The result of that public hearing was a series of technical comments, was a number of issues that simply required clarification in the FEIS. And there was also, we believed some general opposition to the project. So what, what the team has done is Tony indicated and as Mike indicated, we have absolutely completely re-envisioned the project that was presented in the, in the DEIS. And I hope you've had an opportunity to take a look at that in the FEIS. It's reduced in scale and it's been reduced in scope. Mike's invitation to the site, I think, is, is critical for you to understand. The plan in the DEIS proposed removing three of the four existing industrial buildings on the site and replacing it with a 56,000 square foot self-storage building. The current plan, the FEIS plan, has reduced that building to 43,000 square feet. All four of those older industrial buildings would be removed. Those industrial buildings, by the way, total something in the amount of 18 and a half thousand square feet. So the net increase on this site is about 25,000 square feet. It's important to bear that in mind. The building importantly is you'll hear tonight and again, we want to spend some time really delving into the, some of these issues. It was sort of monolithic in a sense when you saw it earlier. That has been completely revised. The architecture of the building now reflects sort of five different segments, distinctively articulated clad in different facade materials. It kind of looks like five different buildings sitting next to one another. The height's been reduced. So there was considerable issues about height. The, the building now intersects the four-story building, drops to three stories as it moves to the north, drops to two stories, and yet drops again further to a terrace out to Fenimore Road, which really significantly reduces the perception of mass of this building. So we have a building with reduced square footage, reduced footprint, reduced FAR and reduced height. All of that done in response to the comment and criticism that was coming from your board. So I think at the end of the day, it's a better project. And it's a better project because your board has been pushing us to make it a better project in certain ways. There's a park now proposed on the corner of Waverly and, and Fenimore, a publicly accessible vest pocket park, which wasn't proposed before. So, and the FEIS again has, is really addressed in great detail, the flooding issue, the hazardous materials, visual impacts, lighting, traffic, transportation, economics, and construction related issues. And importantly, the technical legal issue of segmentation that has been raised previously. The FEIS has been submitted to your board twice, revised twice. We believe we have addressed every issue that's raised thoroughly and comprehensively. And what we'd like to do tonight is really walk through some of those major issues of concern that you've expressed previously. So I'm going to hand off to Michael Stein, who's going to talk about the flooding and stormwater issues.
Thank you, Mr. Cleary.
Good evening, Michael Stein, President of Hudson Engineering. We're the engineers of record for the project. I also have with me this evening Tommy, Thomas Coheny from my office. I believe he's got his hand up. Actually, if you could promote him as well. He may be able to add some additional information if, as questions may arise. So what we're looking at, and I just shared my screen, is this is the proposed stormwater management plan we have developed for the, for the, for this proposed building and parking lot. The original self-storage that was constructed previously is located on this portion. There was a portion of the existing parking lot that also served that building. During that time, we had put in water quality measures serving that aspect of the, of the development, which included both green infrastructure as well as other water quality components. That project, that project had resulted in a decrease in impervious area as well. Therefore, we, we weren't required to do stormwater management. As stormwater management as far as attenuating flows on site. We, at the same time, we would not want to attenuate those flows on site because that would allow the water leaving the site to coincide with waters all the way up at the, at the headwaters of the river that's tributary to. The included a rain garden directly on Waverly Avenue that the roof leaders were directed into. The parking lot was direct into a, a collection system on that portion of the lot, which then connected to the, the catch basin located on the corner of Waverly and Fenimore. As part of this development, we fought along that same, and along that same path. Overall, there was approximately 1,270 square foot decrease in impervious area with the proposed development. That included the park that's located at the, at the corner with lawn and landscaping as well as some buffering plantings between the parking lot and Waverly Avenue. The, all the existing parking area will again be directed and to this catch basin here, which goes into a structure, it's called a hydrodynamic separator. It's basically a swirl chamber that is a DEC approved measure for providing water quality treatment to runoff coming from development. It'll eliminate floatables in the water as well as silt and sediment that, that the, the some runoff is carrying along with the pollutants that attach to them.
Mr. Stein, I'm just going to interrupt you for one second. Is this the same as the, the drawing 1-9?
This is.
I just can't see it on.
C2.
Oh, this is C2.
Yes, C2 of our drawing set.
All right. I'm just referring to the, your FEIS statement and it's 1-9 looks to be this one, but.
Chairman, you're correct. It's, it's drawing 1-9 in the FEIS.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, my apologies.
No apologies necessary.
And so the building and portion of the parking lot down at this end of the lot, we're actually directing the stormwater runoff coming into a new rain garden going off the edge of this building that will also contribute towards reducing the impervious area. But again, providing a water quality treatment that's considered a green practice. And as you'll see from some of the, the, the street views that Ms. Martelli will be putting up later on, it is, can be a substantial amenity to, to this area. As one of the first views you'll be coming into, to going down this road. As far as, and so then I'll get into the, the next, or really I know probably the primary concern is the, the flood volume. On the flood volume, we had, we, part of what we had prepared was a volumetric analysis of the available volume that could flood onto the property. We looked at the existing conditions and we looked at the proposed conditions. So the intent is that part of it, as part of the development, we do not want to take up flood storage volume, which could potentially cause flooding elsewhere in other people's properties. So we look at the, at each elevation, and that's where all the different colors are on that drawing. Is between each elevation, we're listing what the flood, with the existing flood storage volume is on site. So you can see in total up to elevation 26, we're, we're a flood accumulative storage of 34,528. And each of the colors again represents the differences in elevation. So the intent is, is that we're not just looking at the total volumetric analysis at the end, but we're going through each elevation. So between elevation 21 and 22 in existing, we had 118 cubic feet. However, now as we look at it in the proposed condition, we have 873. So it's not just at the final flood, flood plain elevation, which is elevation 26 on the site. We're making sure that every foot of elevation on the property has not changed. In, in our case, it actually has improved for every single elevation. What that analysis also does not do is take into consideration that flood analysis does not take in consideration the footprint of the proposed building. The footprint of that proposed building, it will be floodable, where we will have flood vents provided on that building. Where if the flood elevation starts to rise in this area, and it'll flood in, and as the flooding recedes, the flood, the flood waters will be allowed to flood back out. So in a comparison of the existing and proposed areas on volumes on site, we have, we have increased overall for the total flood storage volume approximately 113 cubic feet of storage. And you're talking that flood storage volume is, is in proposed condition is 34,641. If we actually take into consideration the footprint of the building that we're putting in to allow to be floodable, that is an additional 47,000 cubic feet of flood volume. That's above and beyond currently what exists. And so we're actually providing a substantial benefit in addition to outside of the building. And as far as flood, flooding during the hurricane, Hurricane Ida, as most of you have been throughout the village, I'm sure actually all of you have been throughout the village to see the devastation that occurred. This was a historic storm. We typically designed for a hundred-year storm event. And for FEMA, the hundred-year storm event is approximately nine and a half inches of rainfall for a, the, the type of storm that is encountered in this area. For that storm event is, again, it's nine and a half inches of rain during a 24-hour period. But that is a bell curve. It starts off slow, it crests, and then it slows down. In this, in Ida's event, this was a historic storm. In a four-hour period, there was 10 and a half inches of rain. Hence the reason that the flood waters went to elevations that were above the, the 100-year identified flood elevation. Whereas the existing building is elevation 28, the flood elevation is elevation 26 for the FEMA 100-year flood zone. In the building during the storm, is my understanding, there's, in my discussions with the Murphy brothers, is that there was approximately four inches of, of water that had entered into the building. So as part of what their development is exclusive of even what's going on with this new building, is they have floodgates that will be, that will be able to be put into place should, should any predictions of further storms ever occur. And that would prevent any further water, any water from coming back into the buildings again.
Flood gates stopping from going into the building or?
Yes. And as a matter of fact, at my own house, part of what happened was I'm, my house has never flooded. Ida flooded. Part of what I purchased from my own house was a floodgate that covers the door from my garage to my inside. The water can fill up to four and a half feet inside my garage and will never get to the inside of my house. And and once we, we finish the presentation, any questions you, the board has, we will be here. But I'll hit it back to Tony, I think, or am I turning it over to Kim?
You're on mute. Apologies. So Kim Martelli is going to be speaking next to address the visual comments that the board raised and to walk you through the visual materials that were presented in the FEIS.
Good evening. I'm Kim Martelli, owner, principal of KTM Architects. Also located up the street from you guys in the Village of Mamaronek. We're at 700 Fenimore Road. So we have a perfect view of this facility. And tonight I'll walk you through some of the simpler documents you've seen in the past, including visuals like the site plan that you're looking at right now. All through the 3D renderings, including both daytime and evening renderings from multiple vantage points. Mike began, this is a visual of the existing site conditions. Primarily, the highlighted gray building is the existing self-storage facility. And for orientation on the lower north corner, that is the one and a half. And for orientation on the lower north corner, that is the one and a half story stucco and two story storefront building at the corner of Waverly Avenue and Fenimore Road. And for a better vantage point, I'd like to share with you a visual taken from a little bit higher view, not quite aerial, but it gives you a sense of what is there today. This is the self-storage facility as constructed. And you could see the other structures that remain at the center. The Murphy Brothers contracting facility, a building we typically refer to as the barn building. And then there is that front corner north building.
Is that photographed in the FEIS?
Yes, I believe it's the existing condition photo. And Mr. Newfeld, we also have photos taken from a pedestrian perspectives as well. Now utilize some of those in referencing our 3D models.
And Kim, just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, this photo is not in the FEIS, we'd be happy to include it.
Yeah, I'd like a copy of that, so thank you.
Just as.
I think these were from a prior presentation that we made to, to the board. Just to, to, to the changes that were being made.
So keeping this vantage point in mind, I just want the board to get an understanding of what the prior application was and the prior scale of the building. So to give you that sense, we provided a rendering that illustrates both the existing condition buildings and that prior proposed rendering. So let me bring you back for orientation. This is a view at the corner of Fenimore and Waverly. There's the corner north building. Here is the remainder of where the barn building is. And here's how the original proposed addition overlapped those existing structures. It gives you a sense of setback and scale and relationship to the existing self-storage building. As the members of my team has, have advised, we've since redesigned and reimagined the building to be a smaller scale, less invasive building. I will take you through some of those views. This is the current proposed site plan. The colors are intended to illustrate the tiered heights. At Fenimore Road, we are no longer in close proximity to the street. We have a 27 foot setback within which are those tiered rain gardens that Mr. Stein talked about. The lowest level of the building is a two story portion in gray. It then steps up to a small three story portion. This is that peachy color. And then the largest height consistent with the existing building is four stories, and that's that light orange color. The light gray is the existing self-storage facility. And prior renderings, as we illustrated, included views of the newly designed building. Again, we try to take advantage of that similar vantage point just about from the corner of Fenimore and Waverly. This is a view of our front park. On the left in front of the building are tiered rain gardens. The lowest two story structure, tier of the third story and the fourth story. And as Mr. Cleary pointed out, these are designed to give you the familiarity of multiple building types and multiple building depths and facades. We've since gone back and addressed the board's request for views from different vantage points. This is a daytime view driving down Fenimore Road. And this is as you're going through the underpass of I-95. Here is 700 Fenimore Road, my building, as you approach the village. And just beyond that, this is the tip of one of the portions of the self-storage facility. And here's our opposing structures, and we're approaching train tracks in this view. We've taken that same vantage point in the evening. And our building is located here where I'm circling. We've also looked at vantage points from Metro North Railroad tracks. Here is the backside view and the side view of the new self-storage addition. And a view looking back down Fenimore Road toward I-95. And we've also taken that same vantage point in the evening. And here's our building. We do have safety lighting around the perimeter of the building, which has been effective and ideal at the existing structure that will continue to illuminate railroad way. And we've illustrated that in a view from a pedestrian vantage point on Fenimore Road. This is when these offices are very busy. And those are beautiful gardens. We have all the floor plans available, but just as a reminder of the program, I'll zip back to Zon in a second. As a reminder of the program for the building, the ground floor contains utilitarian spaces, including restrooms, elevator, circulation. There's a woodworking shop and self-storage units on the ground floor that interconnect with the existing building. The second floor, which is tapered back, that third floor has, excuse me, the third floor has, sorry, jumped. Jump the gun, there's my second floor. The second floor has Murphy Brothers offices located above the end of that woodworking space with a view of Fenimore Road and the balance of that footprint self-storage facility, interacting with the existing self-storage building. The third floor has a co-working office space and the balance of that third floor is self-storage and the fourth floor is all self-storage. The smallest of all the footprints. Just for reference, we had talked in the past, as back in 2018, about similarly sized and larger buildings. Of the similarly sized or larger buildings, we represent one of the smallest. And if the helpful, this is, Kat, I believe this is also in our FEIS. You'll correct me if I'm wrong. Some of those include 746 Mamaroneck Avenue, a much more, much larger in size, that's a 340,000 square foot building. 9910 Stewart Avenue, that's a seven story, 106,000 square foot building. 123 Mamaroneck Ave, that's 120, almost 128,000, six story building. 845 Palmer Avenue, is a two story, 166,000 square foot building. 270 Waverly. All three buildings are tantamount to just under 83,004 stories. 151 Fenimore, six and seven story structures at 93,000. 225 Stanley Avenue, weighing in at 86,000, four or five stories. And our current proposed building at 416 Waverly Avenue, 84,812 square feet at four stories. We have views, visual references and aerials of each of those buildings. And anything that's not part of your current reference materials would certainly be incorporated. And those are some of those particular structures ranging anywhere from two to seven stories in height.
I have a question on one of the pictures, if you might. It's in your FEIS, it's three F two and three F three.
That, you let me know where to jump.
They're rendering this daytime view from elevated railroad tracks and night views.
Sure, I'll go back to those.
Okay.
So daytime view from Metro North, nighttime view from Metro North.
No, it's, these are from.
Is it photo references, Ashley?
No, it's the same images, but the versions that are in the FEIS have some apartment buildings in the back.
Actually, it's an, it's an auto populated thing from our 3D program. They're auto, it's.
I guess my, my question is, what buildings are those that are in there? They're.
Mr. Newfeld? It's an auto populated, automatic background. We just got rid of those. The program we use auto populates with data, it's not actual data, so you write this out. Correct visuals. And you'll know this, as you, as you approach the, this area from train tracks, right? You don't have large buildings in that direction.
Okay, the buildings that I see there, what are those buildings in the back?
Also, I'm just going to say that just to be clear and let me know if my language is clear. The 3D program that we use to create modeling auto creates a background of buildings that are not factual. And so for the visual you're looking at right now, we've removed those visuals.
Hey, Kim. I think he's asking, this is the Ice House that's on the street?
I'm not asking about the Ice House.
Let me speak, the one in the far background is the old suburban carding building that's there now.
No, if you look straight down that road that you're on, the view from the tracks, there, you just had that. Yes.
Yeah.
If you go down the road, there, there are buildings in the back, you see those?
Which ones, these buildings?
No. Go to the street. Follow the street in the middle of the road.
Yeah.
Okay, what are those buildings there?
Left or right?
Yes, on the left and right side of that road at the end.
Or existing.
Those are the, those are the existing buildings in the proportion that they belong. They're, they're, they're plotted on a, on a map that comes, in fact, you, we paid your planner prior to this to help develop this plan. And we put the buildings on it and he took it, scaled it all properly and verified it. Your painter, your class painter.
We're sure that.
Red color?
Verified that.
Okay, so, but then the ones that are in the FEIS is three F two and three, those are not, those buildings do not exist. Those are just part of your program, correct?
Which ones are you talking about?
You mean the different plants of the images that are on the screen now?
No, they're not on there, that's.
The versions that are in the FEIS need, just need to be replaced with the versions that are on the screen now.
Actually, I can do that for you guys.
Thank you.
I think I got you guys to the end of just over checking. And what I was last pointing out was just any of these larger buildings that needed additional data, although I believe all of this is part of the FEIS as well. Kat can confirm that. This was information that we had pulled together in 2018. And the tail end of this is our existing buildings on the current site.
Which are proposed to be removed.
Correct, correct. All these structures are intended to be removed. And the site would be occupied by one single structure. And the balance of the site would be occupied by new this and new stormwater rain gardens and the onsite parking. Let me back to that first. And I'll turn it back over, Mr. Trump, if there are any other questions, I can answer those at the end as well for any of the board members.
So, Mr. Chairman, we have Brian Dempsey, our traffic engineer from DTS Providence here. I know the board did not really have any significant questions or comments in the last couple of meetings with respect to traffic. But Mr. Dempsey can give you a brief statement or overview of the lack of traffic impacts as it relates to the revised and redesigned and revised design if, if you'd like.
Up to you. Go ahead.
All right, thank you, Tony. Just briefly summarizing traffic, we improved the site circulation as was shown on what Kim just illustrated. We're removing a driveway on Waverly Avenue. We're, we're removing a dry curb cut on Fenimore Road. So it'll only be one curb cut on each street. So that'll improve safety, that was a request from, from our side as well as from AKRF when we did that. In terms of traffic generation, we're going to have about only half the traffic that the previous site was generating in the morning and the afternoon, it would be approximately the same traffic. We do have no impacts on levels of service. We illustrate in the FEIS that we'll have 26 parking spaces, which will be more than sufficient throughout the day and during both day and weekends. And we're also providing three loading zones. Currently, there are zero loading zones at the site. And that's a quick summary of traffic there.
So, Mr. Chairman, I don't see Bill Cannavan from Hydro Environmental Solutions. I don't know if he's here on this slide. Or if the board had any questions or for Mr. Cannavan. It seemed again, as I indicated earlier, that the majority of your questions as it relates to the contamination have been addressed. But that's the presentation that we had for you this evening. Oh, I do see Mr. Cannavan coming on the screen right now. So we're, we're here, we, again, we want to thank you for elevating us to panelists this evening, being able to address some of the comments and questions that we heard over the course of the last few meetings. We do, there are a couple of housekeeping items that we noted that we will need to revise in the FEIS. But we'll be happy to try to answer any questions that the board may have.
Hey, Tony. I've been here, I'm here.
Okay, so Bill Cannavan is on the screen from Hydro Environmental Solutions. So, Mr. Newfeld, we'll turn it back to you.
Yeah, does he not want to speak?
Bill, is there anything that you want to say from, from your standpoint?
I assume that's another, right?
Mr. Cannavan will be here to answer any questions that the, the board may have.
Okay.
Hey, Tony.
Yes, Bill.
I'm, I've been here, I'm sorry.
Okay. Bill, we're going to, is there anything that you would like to present to the board or give an overview about?
Sure, I can give a quick overview. We, uh, I was, basically, we did multiple subsurface investigations there. Somewhere in the neighborhood of 20 borings and six or eight temporary wells. We sampled soil, groundwater, multiple parameters, metals, volatile organic, semi-volatile mechanics, pesticides, and so on. Couple reports went back and forth. AKRF reviewed a bunch of stuff. We went and addressed, I believe we addressed most of the questions they had. And at the end of the day, we're now, if this development is going to occur, it's going to be footing excavations, possibly some de-watering, shallow groundwater table, all material excavated, removed, will be dealt with according to excavation work plan, which we, I believe we, we provided. And then it's going to have to have a proper home because it is urban film, it does contain some pHs, cyclic hydrocarbons. And I think there'll be minimal de-watering if any. And and I think that covers it. I don't know if anybody has questions related to it, but it's all, I guess what I'm trying to say is it's all going to be step by step in accordance with DC regulations on, on how a site in an urban environment like this gets developed. And you know, proper procedures will be followed as outlined on the record.
Thank you, Mr. Cannavan. So Chairman Newfeld, we'll turn it back to you. We thank you again for the opportunity to be able to present to you this evening, try to address the comments and questions you do, you do have. If there's any questions you have for us this evening, our professionals are here in order to be able to endeavor to answer your, your concerns.
Well, I'll certainly ask the board that in a moment. I just had one question that's come up before and I looking for it in my letters here. Would you, let me know, with regard to Hurricane Ida, what I was curious about, what I've asked about, I don't think we've kind of answered. How high was the flooding at that point? And what was the nature of the damage? Because I was by the building at that time.
So I think Mr. Stein.
Yes, I had mentioned that earlier. And in the, the storage building that's currently there, they had approximately four inches of water in the building.
Yeah, and then, and what kind of, how much, it impacted many of the, much of the interior, didn't it? I mean, I, I, I want to, I want to, I drove by there and it was difficult to drive in the area, but it was the time I drove, it was, I think parts of it were opened up because of the extensive flooding that the village encountered then.
All the damage was done on the other buildings. Most of the damage was minimum damage to this building because of the, the only four inches. And it's a concrete floor. It's, so all the damage was done in the woodworking shop and in the, in the front buildings in the barn.
And the woodworking shop had approximately four feet of water in it. And the, the, over at the corner, there was approximately six feet of water in the building.
Almost eight feet at the front of the barn, eight feet.
So they were, because my recollection is that the storage facility had parts of the front were taken, were opened up.
No.
No.
We didn't open up any of the storage facility. Parts of it, you can't open it up. We have, we have doors that you open up and that's all you can open up. We didn't. We have, we have doors that you open up and that's all you can open up. We didn't open up any part of the building or anything. None of the, none of the building was damaged because it's all metal frame and, and metal interiors.
How many feet are we away from Fenimore Road in the north of storage?
Right, Mr. Newfeld, just to clarify, the existing buildings only designed with a pair of entry doors. It doesn't have the same types of roll-up doors and loading facilities that are being planned in the addition. And where the addition is planned, it's being designed at an elevation that not only accommodates floodplain conditions, but as Mr. Stein pointed out, that new facility will accommodate some of the conflicts that we have that are created by the existing buildings and hampering the ability to address water issues. I think it's important that the board listens and understands Mr. Stein's presentation because it's very complicated, very detailed. But it's important that they understand what he is describing as a stormwater system as it relates to the new facility.
Compared with the older buildings that are proposed to be demolished, which do not comply with current flood controls and requirements, the fact that the site right now is fully impervious, there are going to be impervious, I'm sorry, pervious portions to the site, the park, and the additional flood mitigation measures that Mr. Stein walked you through earlier with, as it relates to the new building.
Whether, was there damage to any of the interior stored materials or anything, office equipment or any equipment used for the structure of the building?
Of which building? Of the self-storage?
Yes, the self-storage.
No, but the other buildings were. The older buildings all were. Four, four and a half feet of water in the woodworking shop. Eight feet of water on Fenimore Road, which puts almost eight feet of water in my, front of my barn. It took the doors off and everything. That's what you saw opened because the barn doors got ripped off.
Okay, um, one second. I'm just looking back at some notes when you were here last, one earlier time. Any members have any questions?
I just wanted to say one thing in response to something that Mr. Murphy said at the very beginning. I'm not sure what you meant by an official visit to the site. I have been to the site because in general, the way the board members look at sites is they go on their own and look at the site, so. Please understand that what you said was not necessarily correct. I can speak for myself only, but I have been to the site. Since this is a question of the exterior, it did not require going into a building. It did not require anything other than looking at the site and the entire property. So I just wanted to make that clear first. But I do have a couple of questions. I'm a little was confused on the flooding drawing, which is you were explaining about the storage for the stormwater and you said that the building itself allows, you know, I guess it's a, the, the ground floor allows for the stormwater to run through. How does that add to the stormwater capability of the site? That was confusing to me.
It adds to the flood storage volume because whereas a typical foundation, like the foundation for the existing self-storage building, that, that space below the, the floor elevation, the first floor elevation is filled in, that's entirely filled in with soil material fill. And then the, the first floor is actually poured on top of that fill. Whereas this building, the new, the new addition to the building, I, I should, before I even get there, the old building was located entirely outside of the, the hundred-year flood zone. So it was, the entire, the building itself was located outside of there. In this case, the, the addition is substantially or primarily located within the flood zone. So that space below the first floor is open below. It has a slight pitch from one end to the, to another, to, to where the floodgates are, so it eventually will all flood out or drain out. But that, that storage volume becomes an additional volume that didn't, doesn't currently exist.
But, so, I'm sorry, I'm still confused. So let me, it's, it's the use of the term, the, the storage volume. You've essentially made a hole. I realize it's very simple though in my language. You've made a hole underneath the building in order to allow the stormwater to run through it. So are you, essentially, that's what you've done if I understand correctly. Are you saying that now stormwater will collect there?
No, it's not that it'll collect there. And, and, and it's really floodwater. That would be the right term. So it's really the floodwater. So as the water level starts to rise in this area, it'll start to enter the floodgates on the lower level. And as it, as it flows in, the water rises underneath. And ultimately, as it starts to recede, that water then will with, will, will be removed and, and flow out.
So Mike, so Michael, it's John Keller. Hi. So you're not, you're not digging a hole, you're just elevating the first finished floor, the lowest finished floor above the existing grade.
So the existing grade at the northern, northeastern end of the site is around elevation twenty-two. And the first floor of the building is going to be up at elevation twenty-eight. So that's, that distance between the floor up to the underside of the floor on the inside, it will be basically an open cavity. It, it's not going to be, it, it, the, the floors will be sloped, so that way it's not going to retain the water. It'll be sloped enough where it will drain out. There will be access, so if waters does flood in, that they have the ability to take a squeegee or, or just clean any debris, that mud that may have come in there during the storm.
It's more like a crawl space, Michael. It's not part of the building. Nothing will be stored there. No equipment, no utilities.
And that is, is above what a layperson would consider grade. Or that person is below, so.
No, it's not below grade because if it was below grade, it wouldn't be able to drain out.
Okay, but you're not digging a hole per se because it's, I understand, okay.
Well, on, on a portion of the site, we're, we will be digging out because on the south, on the southern corner of the site, that grade is, gets up to higher like elevation twenty-six, twenty-five. So that, and that's where the, the additional volume comes is by removing that soil and having it, the first floor elevated.
I think it would be helpful to have this in a diagram in the FEIS, like a cut through of the building that shows where the grade is, where your floodgates are, and, you know, where the anticipating flooded levels would be. And then where you would start having your finished floor area and your storage space so that you can show that the finished floor area would be outside of the anticipated flood zone.
And just, and just to clarify, Michael, it's forty-seven thousand, is it cubic feet of addition, of additional volume of storage over and above what's on site at the present time?
Correct. So it, it approximately, I, I, I mean, give or take, it really depends on what elevation you're looking at. I mean, if you start looking all the way up at it to elevation twenty-seven, then we get, it becomes more, but I'm really looking, I was looking more in the ballpark of going from elevation twenty-one and a half, twenty-two up to the twenty-six, where the, which is the flood elevation.
Which is the hundred-year, the base flood elevation.
Correct.
Yeah.
Why do you call it storage? I'm still confused by the, maybe it's the use of the term storage. Why do you say you have additional floodwater storage by making this? Because nothing's being stored on site and so why is?
It's being allowed to enter in, so.
Right.
While it's flooding, it's, the water's being stored there as opposed to that water going on to being pushed onto somebody else's property.
Oh, I see. So, okay, now I.
I, I really think that.
Storage, it's just sort of a waiting space. It's a waiting.
Rob, and I, I think maybe a better way to think about this is the building is not going to displace the water. The water's going to be able to come up and exist underneath the building. I don't really consider that storage. I just feel that because you have a pass-through system, it's not going to displace the water and therefore it's not going to be pushed somewhere else. Because.
And actually, we, this, this is in addition to the, the volume we already have on site. That without doing, without using the space, we are already providing equivalent storage volume.
And that's, and that's because the foundation goes below.
Excluding anything below the, the basement level or the crawl space level of the proposed building with the grading on site. And I can bring the diagram back up. You'll see that inside the building is not highlighted because the entire, that, we've analyzed this. Bring this back up.
It's actually replacement of floodplain volume by removing the existing buildings. Okay. It's a simple way to, a simple way to look at it. Okay, that makes a lot of sense.
That I understand, better than the word store and storage.
Right, right.
I kept looking for, you know, actually storing it on site. That's not what you're doing, so.
So you will see that now the area within that footprint of the building is colored in. So, and up, up here in this end, you have elevation twenty-six, elevation twenty-four in the parking lot. So whereas that, you really have very little storage there now, this provides much more.
Oh, well, I, I think Ashley's suggestion of including a diagram of inside the building that, that can visually explain that would be very beneficial.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Yeah.
I have another question, which is, which is for the, for the architect or planner, much for what she, what is. So, and it's just a sort of trying to understand, you have a list of buildings, right? And there, right, of other buildings in the village and their sort of square footage within. Is that just supposed to show that there are other large buildings in the village? Because it doesn't really relate to anything, different zoning districts allow for different sizes of buildings, different lot areas, you can allow build, bigger buildings. So is the point just to say, we're not the biggest building in the village, there's lots of other big buildings? Or is there some other point that you've been trying to make with that? I, in the FEIS, for the first time I saw that, I was confused as to what it was showing.
Mrs. Kramer, this was a comment that has come up for a number of years that we have addressed. As I mentioned, this document was prepared actually in 2018 at the comments from the board regarding the excessive scale and volume of the building. And I think that document is very effective in showing that the proposed volume and scale of the building is not disproportionate within the village. Now, we did receive multiple comments that it was excessive. As a reminder to the other members of the zoning board, this building is not intending to violate any zoning regulations for height. It does seek variance of a floor within the total permitted height. It is seeking variances for FAR. Again, the conditions of this type of building and its function are not impacted in the same way as some other buildings like multi-family residences may affect utilities and the infrastructure within the village, which is why the professional team has come together to clarify the limitations on the impacts of this type of building program. So, Mrs. Kramer, is that clear? This is why we've addressed that comment over the last four years.
Uh, you still, I remember, you know, I have made the comment and I remember other people making the comment. But you list, unless I missed this when I was looking at your, your updated FEIS, you know, the, you're not your, your draft of the updated version, I may have missed it. You list those buildings, which I understand, so this building is X thousand square feet and this building is Y thousand square feet. But do you have drawings, do you have drawings in there that shows, since you use the term scale and merely telling me the size doesn't show me scale, do you show, do you have, do you have visuals of those buildings in their streetscape to see?
Yes, I can scroll through them again, but we did submit a package which included both aerial documentation and photo documentation of those structures. And I think that we've also illustrated that the concern is not one about the proportion of our building within our neighborhood. Because both through model and 2D illustration, we have shown that this building's scale is not disproportionate within its community.
Okay. I keep answering my question.
Anyone else have any questions or anything covered besides?
Yeah, I, I just want to say that I have visited the, the, um, the unit, you know, this, the site also. I have not officially met with the Murphy brothers or employees for a tour, but I'm certainly happy to, to go and to to go and see, see it more officially, as you'd say, and to walk closer in and share, share what you want to share with us that we can't see from a more informal site visit.
Who should, who should we contact? We can't have more than two members, is that right, Charles? Charlie, just two members at a time, right? You can't have more, right?
Yes, that's correct, unless you would like to notice it as a meeting, but.
Right. So assuming we just do it with two, who do we contact from the applicant to make that appointment?
You can either contact me and I can coordinate the meeting, or you can reach out to the Murphys directly, whatever. We'd be happy to have you to the site, walk you through.
Mr. Jeffrey, we'll have someone con- we'll contact you within the next week. Any board members that'll want to go. I just, we just can't do more than two at a time.
Totally understand.
I guess I have, I have a question. I, in your, your comments to our questions, you said that precedent is not an environmental factor when making a determination of significance. So I guess my question is, in your presentation today and in other presentations, you do cite precedent as a reason why this is something that we should consider as we're looking at significance. But you're saying we can't use precedent going forward as a environmental factor. I mean, at what point can, is it your position that we can look at precedence and consider that as environmental factor? Because it's kind of a catch-22. You're saying.
I, I think what Ms. Martelli was saying as it relates to other buildings was in, was answering another question. So when the board had, on a number of occasions, indicated that this is going to be the largest building in the village of Mamaroneck, or this, there's nothing in Mamaroneck like this. This, providing of the other buildings and the sizes of those buildings in relation to those lot sizes and the other zoning information is being responsive to address that question. So it's not being necessarily utilized for precedent. We're not saying, well, there's precedent, you built something, you, you allowed something here. It's, it's being responsive to the question and comment that, that there are other buildings that have been built in Mamaroneck that are significantly, significantly larger.
So, so what, what is your view? When is it, when, or if is it, is it appropriate to look at precedent as a factor? Are you, is your position that it's, it's just not ever?
Mr. Jeffery, I think we, I think you need to make that statement one more time. And we need to make sure that the board members understand what you just said. And I want to be clear, we're not pointing it out for precedence. We're pointing it out to dispute the board's comment that this is the largest building in the village. We're stating very clearly that in no such way is it, nor is it close to the largest building in the village of Mamaroneck, both by volume, by square footage, and by height.
So that's your sell point, okay.
Very important that comments that are made to both the architectural and engineering team are rebutted so that the board understands we are listening, but we also are aware of the actual proposal that's before you. We do want to make sure the board understands and understands the comparison what we're presenting versus what other structures are within the village.
So that was the reason for your addressing that, I understand.
Yes, addressing the inaccuracy of that statement.
So your point is that this is not the largest project in the, largest construction by square footage or size. Understood.
And your position, and I under- I understand your, what you're saying, you didn't use those examples for precedent, you used that to answer questions that were asked in the past. So my question is, 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 is your position that precedent is just not ever a factor that's properly used in making a determination of significance?
Our comment, and, and I think it was response A-12 in the FEIS, indicated that precedent is not an environmental factor for consideration in an environmental impact statement review.
Okay.
Follow that. Maybe you could help me understand that. I, I'm just not following it either. Precedent is not, if there's been precedent on certain matters that the village has taken, the boards have taken. And I don't see that here necessarily, but I'm not following what, what do you mean?
So, under, under the secret regulations.
Right. Right.
Precedent is not an environmental factor for the board to consider to determine whether or not there is an impact. And whether or not that impact can be mitigated as opposed to traffic or something else.
Right. But if there's an, but if there's an impact, then subjectively, the presidential aspect of that impact is obviously ways, right?
That's, that's pure speculation, which again is not a factor to be considered.
Speculation is not. So no, okay, I'm with it. Okay. Okay. Anyone else have any um?
Yeah.
Ashley or I'm sorry, Brian?
I, I do, yeah. Uh, question for Bill Canavan. Uh, Bill, who at AKRF have you been uh, going back and forth with? You said that you've been working with them on a lot of the environmental issues. Uh, I know we heard from Brian Zeroff. Uh, have you been speaking with him or Ashley or who's your contact over there?
I just reviewed uh, whatever those guys sent me. I reviewed their, their comments and their reports. And I commented back. I've not specifically spoken to anybody.
Okay.
And then that, that, that would kind of be atypical. Um, usually it's just like, here's our, here's our data, here's our report. This is what we did. What do you guys think? They get back to me and then, you know, I, I, I respond back to that.
Okay.
Probably responded three times on the record to AKRF's comments and, and our review of the work we've done.
You mentioned that you might have to uh, do some de-watering as part of this project. Is that correct?
I mean, the water table's pretty shallow there. I think it's sixty eight feet. So anything that's below, anything that's below the water table might have localized um, de-watering, which would involve, you know, pumps and groundwater, treating it and then discharging it under permit, which is pretty common.
Right, okay. All right. And, and is that, you know, I'm, haven't been on all thirty meetings. I only joined the board about six months ago. Uh, so i- is all of that in the original uh, environmental impact statement, uh, you know, or is that just something that should you encounter it? You'll be doing it. So it's duly noted that you're going to be doing it in accordance with a DEC regulation or standards?
It would be, it would be duly noted and all material removed during excavation and or de-watering. Would have to comply with all local and state regulations related to it.
And, and the EIS does include an overview of the construction management plan and how that would work generally. Um, the specific plan would be revised or refined um, when Bill works with the DEC.
Right, okay. Yeah, no, my, my main focus and my questions, uh, you know, besides visual and flooding and that really were environmentally based. Uh, and the last presentation that we had uh, included, as I said, Brian Zeroff from AKRF, who gave me the level of detail uh, that I would really like to see as part of the FEIS. I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel. Ashley, if we could get a transcript of that perhaps written and just inserted into the FEIS, uh, his presentation was really what I was looking for, really good. Uh, you know, this uh, site uh, has some unique features. Uh, given the fact that it's in the floodplain, it's an old industrial area that there's uh, uh, old, uh, you know, I believe, believe contamination sites and there's a lot of, lot of interesting and unique features of this property. Um, which dictate, you know, going to that level of detail. And like I said, uh, I believe that Brian did already present that. So, you know, I don't have uh, a lot of questions for the crew. Uh, you know, I do think that Michael Stein's presentation uh, has been quite helpful. Uh, I do want to see those layers. Um, you know, for the building, but now I, I understand it. Uh, you know, and uh, and in terms of, in terms of visiting the site, I, I, I've been going past that site for thirty years. Uh, I know what you've got there and um, anything will be an improvement. Uh, you know, that's not, that's certainly not an issue. You've got old structures there. I know about the flooding, seen the flooding, uh, and um, what is currently there is uh, certainly not good for the environment. There's no control over anything in those buildings. They're not uh, flood rated. Uh, we have no control over what can be stored in there. Uh, and everybody ought to keep an eye to the fact that if they've got construction vehicles or oil storage or gas storage for their construction business uh, that what's currently there is not good. Not, not good at all. So I do appreciate the efforts you guys have been putting into this plan. And I do think that the process has uh, genuinely improved uh, everything across the board. There's more impervious surface. There's more thoughtfulness about the look. This building is going to be there uh, long after I leave town. Uh, it's a legacy and you know, it should be something uh, which the village can look to with pride. Uh, we want it to be a uh, you know, uh, something which is good for the economy, good for the owners. Uh, you know, but also good for everybody else. We don't want this village to just turn into um, you know, monoliths. Uh, the work that's been done to this building is greatly appreciated is what I'm trying to say. Uh, so no, I don't have any questions for anybody else.
Mr. Glassley, I'd like to thank you for your comments. And if I could just respond to two things real quickly. Uh, we, we, I, I agree with you. Uh, unfortunately, the process has taken a, a lot longer than the applicant would have liked. But I do think that, uh, you know, the, the process has yielded a much better project. Um, you, you've heard Mr. Cleary and Ms. Martelli before talk about the, what the new structure looks like. Uh, many months ago, we walked you through what that vision was. And instead of one monolithic structure, looking structure, it does have the step down architecture, the breakup. So it looks like several buildings. I think that, that's, that's a real plus. I just like to correct one thing you said. I think you, you meant to say less impervious surface as opposed.
No, no, you have more impervious surface now.
Yeah, so it's gonna be more pervious. Impervious. And um, we can certainly update the FEIS. Um, if you look at the FEIS that was originally submitted in September, the appendices did have transcripts of uh, prior meetings. And I do think that the April meeting uh, and Brian's comments, uh, Brian from AKRF's comments to, to the board on that issue are, are extremely probative and extremely relevant. And we'd be happy to uh, get that transcript and included in a future version of the FEIS. I think.
Mr. Cleary, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
This is a little unusual in the sense that um, in these matters I've been involved with you, you have a lot of things here that as, if things arise, they get evaluated and then they get dealt with. Um, but generally speaking, there's a level of independence. In this case, we have a well-known and highly reputable and by history, uh, the Murphy brothers who are contractors. And I understand they'll be doing their own contract, their own construction work. Do you have in cases where you're having the applicant also being the contractor? Do you have, is there, what kind of a methodology is there to have an independent person with oversight to report and then to address the issues?
So I guess, Mr. Chairman, the question is who's overseeing the construction of the plan that the Murphys are getting approved?
Correct.
It's the Murphys building the project at the same time.
Well, it's, it's overseeing and it's also evaluating subjective issues that have to be reviewed and then maybe taking a different course. So it would be that, correct.
So I think what would typically occur is during the course of the submission of, so number one, you will leave a very detailed set of findings when you get to that point, which will document very clearly the limitations that will follow through the building permit um, process as the building moves forward. Typically, there would be a construction management plan, a building demolition plan. All of that would be part and parcel of the record that will follow from your decision here. So I, I don't think this is the case of the, you know, the chickens watching the hen house here. I think there will be numerous element, numerous levels of overview and oversight. And frankly, Mr. Chairman, you will ensure that that's the case. So I'm not concerned.
There would be an independent person involved in that somehow.
So. We do hire an engineering company to oversee and put together a whole book of the concrete, the you know, the, the footings out of the compression. All of that gets documented and submitted to you as part of the building process.
We, we don't, we, we're not involved in the building process itself.
But that's what you're asking for. Yes, there's somebody that's going to be overseeing it. Other than your.
Your building department will do that. But Mr. Chairman, again, just, I, I don't know how many times you've been involved as a lead agency with an environmental impact statement. The finding statement that you leave behind is an incredibly important document and it will govern every other permit and approval process that follows along. So I think to the extent you have issues and concerns, you will embed them in your findings and say basically to the building department, make sure these things are addressed. Make sure these concerns are addressed. So you're going to control all of this, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. I have a question. Ashley, did you have any information that you're waiting for? So you take that up with them at some point, separate from this, or if you want to in front of them, I don't care.
Yes, so I have two draft memos that were provided to the board. One was going through all of our previous comments and saying whether or not they've been addressed. And the other one was looking back at the comments from the, the board from the, the November sixteenth meeting. Um, following this meeting, I will finalize those memos and provide them to the board and the applicant. But just to give you an overview of what the topics are, I would say that um, broadly, the majority of our comments have been addressed. There are some uh, clerical items that we've noticed, some consistency items that still need to be cleaned up. Um, I would, one of the big comments that I've had and that the board has had has been about the flooding. I think there was a lot more information presented tonight than what we've seen in the FEIS and in prior presentations. I think all of that needs to be in the document. Um, and then one overarching formatting uh, comment that I have is instead of having the comments from the ZBA members at the November sixteenth meeting as response to comments in the FEIS, my preference would be to take that technical information and embed it into chapter two. And then have your cover letter say how you address the comments at this, at the meeting on the sixteenth, as well as the meeting tonight. So instead of adding additional response to comments within the FEIS, still on the record. Uh, but I think it would be more appropriate to, to keep the FEIS as being responding to comments that actually occurred during the public comment period.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions?
I just wanted to make one comment. You know, I appreciate the hard work that the applicant has done and I recognize that it has been a long, um, over months and months and I guess years to come to this place. But you know, their initial position was that they were not subject to any kind of secret review. And that was a pretty aggressive, you know, um, position which ultimately um, this board didn't agree with. But if you did, if the applicant didn't have that, you know, aggressive position, you know, this application would be more, would be further along than it is today. So, you know, um, it's a long process. It's a, it's a much better, I agree with what Brian has to say. It's a much better proposal than what was initially um, presented to us. And it's been a long time. And it's just been a process. You know, you wanted your process to, to argue your case that you didn't need to go through this and that's, that's fair, but it did add some, some time to the timeline. But I, I think this is without question an improvement from where you started.
Okay, if there's nothing further, um, the applicant has nothing further, the board has nothing further? Is there a motion to adjourn then?
Miss, uh, Mr. Newfeld, I just want to reiterate the items that are being requested by the board members. A photo document, which is a semi aerial at the corner of Waverly Avenue and Fenimore Road. A resubmission of any three D models illustrating more accurately buildings in the foreground, um, the foreground.
And together with photographs as well as the di- the computer generated ones.
Uh, photographs of those vantage points?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm gonna clarify what was asked for of Mr. Stein regarding illustration of the flood action areas. To me, that would be appropriately a schematic building section that illustrates to the board the elevations of the floors, the elevations of the existing site grading, proposed site grading, and a highlighted area to understand that space that's utilized for water volume.
And on the diagram, I would put what the um, one hundred year floodplain elevation is as well as where Ida hit.
Michael, read, shake your head.
No problem.
And the transcript from the April meeting.
Right, as well as other items. I don't know. I've been making notes here, but as you've been going through this, but you could.
No, I, I want to be clear because actually I think I listed all the items.
I'm not, I can't answer that because I don't have a photographic memory of this past hour.
Right, no. And as Tony said, I do want the transcript from the April meeting.
Okay.
That's.
So I, I think we have, I think we have the major items and we'll certainly circle back with Ms. Lai offline.
And we'll also be in contact with you about the site visit. Super. Okay, great. Okay. Thank you very much, everybody. Sir, formal motions. If nobody wants to move, just to.
We can just. I think Robin moved.
Oh, I didn't hear. I'm sorry. Robin moved to, to adjourn. Okay.
I did.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, that's fine. We really don't usually do it, but all right, fine. Greta?
Um, yeah, that's fine. I was thinking maybe we could talk about, you know, that um, litigation, but that's okay. We don't have to. We can do. I'm not going to be here on Thursday, but I, I'll just catch up with you later then.
And we should, uh, we can do that in executive session too. So we'll have a separate link available.
Okay, great. Thank you. Greta, you good for adjourn?
Yep.
Okay, Robin is good. Brian?
Yes.
And Robin, you said yes, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, yes. All right. That does it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.